Good afternoon, we'll get underway with our public forum. Welcome councillors, welcome the media and the staff and of course the submitters. We start with apologies. I'll move from the chair, the apology received from councillor McTavish to be accepted, second to councillor Staines. All those in favour please say aye. Carried. I'll move from the chair that the agenda of the public forum as published be confirmed. Second to councillor Staines. All those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. And finally before the submissions, I'll move from the chair that the minutes of the meeting of the public forum held on the 19th of May 2014 be confirmed as a true and correct record. Second to councillor Staines. Any discussion on that? Put it. All those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. Okay, can I invite Alex Bowman up from High Performance Sport New Zealand who's going to talk to Dean Horro? Welcome. Who are going to talk about the local initiatives. Welcome gentlemen.
Thank you very much Mayor Call and it's nice to be back. I think we made a presentation about 13 months ago, so I would like to give you an update in terms of High Performance Sport New Zealand and what regional initiatives we have in Dunedin. I would like to introduce Dean Horro who is the Regional Relationship Manager here in Dunedin. Just in terms of a recap, High Performance Sport New Zealand was formed in 2011 to drive high performance sport in this country. It was an organisation or entity that came together from three organisations. The investment arm of Spark, what is Sport New Zealand now, the South Academy and the North Academy. And it came into being as one organisation to really provide a one-stop-shop for high performance. So not only investment in international sporting organisations and regions, but also provide the performance support delivery to carded athletes and regional athletes as well. So just so you know the background, it is quite unique compared to other countries. As you can tell, I'm not from New Zealand, but I did live in New Zealand when I was very young in Christchurch. And I do see great potential for New Zealand to perform at the highest level on the world stage and some of the results will show that. We are quite ambitious with our goals. We do have to aim high. 14+ in Rio in 2016 and 16+ in 2020 Tokyo. We won 14 medals in London. We also target world championships in non-Olympic sports, netball, rugby league and obviously the All Blacks as well. And the target for gold medal at Paralympic Games is eight to 12. We focus on gold medals for the Paralympics, but obviously we support athletes that have the potential to win medals as well. We haven't done the analysis for SOCHI at this point in time, but we anticipate that the goal for Korea in 2018 will be two, two medals moving forward, but we still have to do the debrief on SOCHI. So we had performance goals, but I think more importantly, or just as importantly, the second goal is system sustainability. How do we ensure that we build a system that can produce results in 2020 and 2024 and beyond? And this is why it's so important that our regional hubs, the six regional hubs that we have can develop athletes, can develop coaches and performance support as well. And thirdly, our long-term aspiration is that New Zealand is seen or recognised as having the world's, one of the world's leading high performance systems. We have components of that, but we aren't quite there yet and obviously that's our goal for 2020. Interestingly, in terms of some of the results, if you take a look at our results in 2013 based on Olympic disciplines, we would have ranked eight in the world based on gold medal rankings, which is an incredible result. I would take that result with a grain of salt because the year after the Olympics is quite unpredictable, but to have nine world champions, seven silver medals and four bronze medals is quite outstanding, particularly if you take a look at some of those countries that were ahead of or are just ahead of us. So New Zealand with a population base of 4.5 million, France at 66 million, Great Britain at 63 million, USA at 317 million, Russia at 170, obviously China at 1.3 billion. And it's always nice to beat Australia who's in 12th with a population of 23 million. So New Zealand is doing well. Ultimately, our challenge is to make sure that we keep that going and we prepare ourselves to 2015, to 2016 and beyond. On the winter side, we didn't quite achieve, we're not quite there yet, sorry, just the slide before. On the winter side, we didn't quite reach our goal. The goal was to get one medal at SOCHI. We did get four top eight places. We had a fourth and a fifth and a ninth and 11 16th places. In Vancouver in 2010, we had no top eight finishes and only two top 16 place finishes. So while we didn't quite reach our goal, I do feel that it was a satisfactory performance. We do have to take a look at the debrief and see where that programme goes from now on. We do have some challenges moving forward, certainly. The world is getting more competitive with more countries winning medals. In 1992, 64 countries won medals. In 2012, 85 countries won medals. In 1992, the top five countries won 48% of the medals and in 2012, the top five countries won 40% of the medals. I think the other challenge we have is that the targeted sports that we're supporting are the same sports that other countries are supporting and that's obviously a challenge for us, particularly with some of the well-resourced countries like the UK and Australia. Thirdly, the world is learning quickly from New Zealand. Before 2012, we were below the radar. Post-2012, because of the success that New Zealand has, a lot of countries are adopting similar programmes to what we have, similar initiatives. And then finally, there's increasing pressures on our high performance system and investment and that has increased cost to deliver Glasgow and Rio campaigns. Obviously, Rio is totally different than London. Rio will be a challenging environment. 2012 medalists, the conversion rate from 2011 was lower. So at world championships in 2011, to convert to 2012 medals, New Zealand had a much lower rate than some of the other countries in the world. Performance impact of new money, we're fortunate in 2010 to get additional resource. And then finally, high performance sustainability. And again, looking at 2020 and beyond is still at risk. One of our challenges is that we'll have a lot of athletes that will retire post-2016 and that presents some challenges for us. In terms of Dunedin itself, let's take a look at the athletes. Carded athletes, we have 11 athletes, total four netball, five athletics, one swimming and one hockey. We have a new programme, new initiative in place, which is called Pathway to Podium, which I'll talk a little bit about later. 11 athletes across swimming and rowing, nine in rowing, two in swimming. And we have a pretty vibrant hub here in Dunedin, four full-time staff, four part-time staff, other medical providers as required. In all though, there's 160 athletes based here and 22 SE athletes use the High Performance Sport New Zealand Training Centre. So it is becoming a precinct that is vibrant, but I think we still have some things to do to ensure that we're developing the athletes that are capable to stand up at that podium in four, eight or 10 years' time. Just on the pathway to podium programme, there is a commitment by Sport New Zealand and High Performance Sport New Zealand to invest a million dollars across the country into 14 regions, developing athletes that are eight to 10 years from podium, years from carding. We're currently putting in 62,000 for Otago and 14,000 for Southland and this is to complement the programme that already exists, but it's taking a look at those athletes that have the potential to succeed in eight to 12 years. So it's a very important programme for us. It includes 10 snowsport athletes which will be included in October 2014. Right now, the programme is run by Excellence in Sports, South Island or SE, but the proposal is that it's going to be run by Sport of Otago and Sport Southland in the future. Overall, there's going to be 250 to 300 athletes that will be supported by this programme and it really is about developing a national framework for talent identification and development. In terms of the Dunedin High Performance Training Centre, it is a great facility. Obviously, we want to continue to improve that facility. There has been increased investment around $50,000, a new cold recovery pool, new ventilation system, new gym equipment. We have a number of teams that are using All Blacks in England, have used it, Kiwis and Rugby League and Great Britain will use it in the future and AFL will use it for training camps as well, in addition to the athletes, our athletes who are using it at this point in time. So I do believe that it is becoming a vibrant centre. I think the pathway to podium programme will increase that vibrancy where we have young athletes training with some of the elite athletes and I think the partnership with Dunedin City Council is very important to us, but we believe that these regional hubs are critical for sustainability 2020 and 2024 and beyond. Next slide, thank you.
Thanks Alex. Does anyone have any questions? Councillor Bazey?
Yeah, Mr Bartman. I would have thought the High Performance Institute was set up before 2011, but that was a figure you gave. I thought I had some idea it was earlier than that because Dunedin put in an application to have the High Performance Institute in Dunedin at that time and we won it on merit over Christchurch. Since then, Christchurch should now have their own High Performance Institute and the substantial funding goes into that institution from Sport New Zealand. Are we in competition with Christchurch? It worries me when I hear you say that we could have a programme run by Sport of Otago, which is what they've been doing for a long time anyway. Is that in some way downgrading what we're doing here in Dunedin?
No, because I guess the history is that High Performance Sport New Zealand was established in the middle of 2011, bringing those three organisations together, South Academy, North Academy and the investment arm of Spark, Sport New Zealand. The pathway to podium programme is a programme jointly conducted by Sport New Zealand, High Performance Sport New Zealand. So even though maybe Sport of Otago or Southland is running the programme, there are strict guidelines for the programme. Personally, I don't think there is a competition between Christchurch and Dunedin. What we're trying to do is ensure that we both have high performance precincts. Obviously, Christchurch with Jolly Park, there is a new facility there because the Earthway QE2 demolished that facility and certainly Christchurch is still struggling to recover from that, particularly in terms of the development of some of the junior athletes. Some of the senior athletes obviously can go and train elsewhere. So when I take a look at the hubs, the six hubs that we have, I think there's tremendous potential both in Dunedin and Christchurch, but I think the pathway to podium programme with a national framework and ensuring that there's accountability for the funds that go in, because I said that there was a million dollars nationally and there's about 80,000 going into Otago and Southland, hopefully leveraging more resources here as well to help those athletes.
Thank you. Councillor Wilson?
Thank you. Sport not unnecessarily, but I mean it always focuses on the athlete itself rather than the coaches and the biggest thing I have a worry about the system we've got at the moment is that we're not equipped to train coaches and make sure that they are in all six hubs if not further distributed. And what are you doing about that?
It's absolutely, I mean for our organisation, coaching is the number one priority. So when we started the Pathway to Podium Programme, even though it's focusing on athletes, it's also focusing on coaches to develop them. So that's a critical part of the Pathway to Podium Programme. In addition to that, from a high performance perspective, we run the Coach Accelerator Programme, there's a Coach Leadership Programme and also developing high performance leaders in terms of high performance directors is critical for us. So it's trying to build that sustainability so we don't have to go overseas to hire coaches. In a lot of sports, we're one deep and that's our challenge. So there's a considerable amount of money going into coaching, whether through the National Sporting Organisation or through High Performance Sport New Zealand to develop those coaches, but there still is a gap in my opinion and ensuring that there's an appropriate pathway for coaches to actually get jobs and appropriate remuneration as well. So that was one of the key things from Pathway to Podium.
Councillor Venders?
Thank you very much for all that information on medals etc. The New Zealand ranking, I understand it is medals as a percentage of population? Has there been any research done on medals as a percentage of public funding put into sport?
There have been some studies done. I guess it depends on what medals are you talking about? Are you talking about an Olympic medal which takes four years to develop and ultimately you take a look at that cost and it's not really an appropriate, I guess, figure? So we look at per capita, we take a look at the programming element because we're in coaching, even though ultimately we're accountable for medals, it's not the only thing that we're accountable for. There's some process items as well, but you know, we're not going to shy away from medals. In terms of the cost of medals, it's been done in other countries. You know, if we did that analysis, I'm not sure it would give us that much.
Okay, and you said that other countries are now using similar training methods to what we use here and that that's a challenge and that you're really up against well-resourced countries. Aren't we getting to a stage now with subsidising high performance sport where essentially it's a public subsidy of professional sports?
Well, I think we don't do means testing if that's what you're asking. I think for us, it's taking a look at the demonstrated need. So there would be some athletes that are getting resources from events or from sponsorship. We've looked at other countries that do means testing. In the end, we decided not to go that way as long as we can demonstrate the need and support the performance. I don't think we're supporting professional sports. I mean, it's very limited in terms of the sports that we support that are professional. Normally, those athletes that are competing at the Olympic Games have a very small window to get sponsorship, but it is based on need, but there will be some athletes and sports that are professional.
Councillor Noon?
Thank you, Bishop. Alex, my question was around what's developed in and around Cambridge in the last few years? Rowing, kayaking, cycling, it seems to be the centre of excellence for those sports. Do you see Cambridge being a threat to what's provided here in Dunedin in terms of high performance?
Well, I think it's that argument. I think last year, I think when you asked about centralisation, it is always a challenge. I think one of the things that we have to try to do is allow athletes to develop in their home areas as long as possible, but inevitably, there may come a time, depending on what the sport is, they will have to move into a centralised programme to ensure that they get the highest level of support. So it is trying to balance that. So for example, rowing has, you know, 12 RPCs, Regional Performance Centres and then obviously they have the programme in Cambridge which has been very successful. The new velodrome in Cambridge means that bike will centralise there, but I guess the challenge for us is ensuring that there's still a feeder into that programme and Pathway to Podium, the Pathway to Podium Programme is an important piece for us. But it's not easy, I understand it. Coming from swimming myself, yes, you need to have the central hub, but you also need to have strong clubs, otherwise the central hub dies. So it's trying to find that right balance between the two.
So sorry, just to follow that up, Bishop, I suppose the regional hubs are working as an incubator, I suppose, to a certain degree, a feeder to that national?
Yep. That would be the goal that we want because in the end, if we just have centralised programmes and no feeders, then post-2016, we're going to be dead in the water. So that's why I think the regional hubs are critical for us and the Pathway to Podium Programme is critical as well. It'll take some time to develop this programme, but there's never been a national framework for talent identification and development. And if you take a look at other countries, they've never cracked this, even the UK that pours millions of dollars into this. Australia doesn't have that as well. So it is an opportunity. There'll be some bumps in the road, I think, because you do have 14 regions that may have different resourcing requirements, but I think it's great potential for us.
Councillor Wylie?
Yeah, Alex, just following up on councillor Noon's question. A lot of money has been spent in Cambridge and their assets. How does Dunedin, how can Dunedin put a better foot forward so we can capitalise a little bit further?
Well, I think what's happening now, like I think the facility at Dunedin is fantastic in terms of a daily training environment. If you look at Cambridge, I mean, it's not dissimilar. Yes, you have a velodrome there and obviously you have Lake Karapiro for the rowers, but I think this is a great facility, a great strength and conditioning facility, so obviously you have medical close by as well and you have some very good staff there as well. So I think for me, it's ensuring that we develop staff, we are athlete-focused, we are coach-led. We do have to develop the coaches here and to your point, I think it is critical moving forward, but it is trying to have those hubs and trying to get that vibrancy and I think Pathway to Podium will help that. And then obviously, the goal is to have more carded athletes in Dunedin moving forward.
Is much done with the Otago University in politics and especially in the coach development?
I think that's an opportunity. I think the challenge for us is, what I've seen in four or five countries is when you take an academic approach to coaching, it doesn't always get the outcomes that you want. So I think there's an opportunity for partnership, but for me, coaching, education and development really comes from experiential or experience and how do we help accelerate that to ensure that those coaches have the skills, not necessarily the technical tactical skills, but the skills to lead and manage a programme effectively. And that's what Coach Accelerator is all about, coach leadership programmes that we run as well. So I think there's potential and we haven't tapped into the university. The other aspect to university would be that we want to tap into innovation as well and Otago is well placed in that. One thing I did forget to mention, it was the second last slide, was we do have a national programme here which is called Knowledge for Rio and we have two staff working here that really takes a look at intelligence gathering, what is Rio going to look like? What are some of the conversion rates that we have to hit? So it's really knowledge sharing to create that urgency for performance in Rio and beyond. So that's, one of the aspects is we should have things in Dunedin which are national and Knowledge for Rio is important from that regard.
Just one final quick question. When I look at Bike New Zealand with their base in France, are you liaising with other countries around the world and off-season training? So what I'm thinking is other countries may be coming to Dunedin and basing their sports programme through the tertiary summer break?
Well, we are, we've just started down this path. When I was in SOCHI, I met with a number of countries to take a look at the possibility, not only partnership, I mean, some sports are interested in particular sports and they are interested, we already, as the slide, you know, demonstrated, there are teams that are coming here to train and we want to try to promote that and we'll try to promote it with other countries as well. So that's part of our strategy. And also, as you mentioned, we need to have reciprocal rights when we go over there because it costs us a lot to travel and if the dollar goes down, for example, it makes a significant difference on our budget. So we need to have those relationships where we can tap into facilities and performance support over in Europe or US or in Asia as well.
And ideally, you'd lead quite a few of them to Dunedin?
Yep.
Any questions? Alex, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Now, can I invite Professor Kevin Clements up from the National Centre for Peace and Conflict Studies at the University of Otago?
Thank you, David, and thank you, thank you councillors for giving me this time. This initially, I'm the Director of the National Centre for Peace and Conflict Studies at the University of Otago and one of the things that we do there is we look at the origins and sources of violence at all levels, from the interpersonal level right up to the national and international level. Everything from the neighbour's barking dog to the war in Iraq is in our area of concern. And we're looking also at ways in which we can generate peaceable communities and the ways in which those peaceable communities can make a contribution to, you know, peace and stability worldwide. And initially, in a conversation with the mayor on another matter altogether, he said that he received a request from Mayors for Peace for him to become a member of this organisation and for the city of Dunedin to become a peace city. And, you know, I thought, I was having to develop a rationale for this, but then discovered when I was doing my research for this presentation that in fact Dunedin is already a member of Mayors for Peace and has a commitment to Cities for Peace. And in New Zealand, there are 30 cities or regions which are already members, including Dunedin, Auckland, Hamilton, Christchurch and Wellington. And the other southern members are Amaru, Timaru, the Chatham Islands and Southland. So I thought what I would do in the time I have available is just remind you of what this membership means and ways in which we can make it more effective and ways in which we might also start distinguishing Dunedin as a city for peace. And I've tabled a document from the Auckland City Council for their peace declaration from 2011 and they also have produced a manual, which I can get a copy of to you, called Auckland City for Peace Toolkit, which is looking at ways in which individuals and groups around the city can begin making the city a more peaceable and harmonious place in all sorts of different ways. So on the assumption that we are already a member of Mayors for Peace, this is ready to kind of underline just what that means. Mayors for Peace was established in 1982 by the mayors of Hiroshima and Nagasaki as a way for cities to transcend national borders and work together to press for nuclear abolition. It recognised that some of the biggest political entities in the world these days are cities. So if you're looking at a kind of city like Shanghai with 14 million people, this is kind of, you know, three times the size of New Zealand. So this is not a, you know, a small-scale organisation, this is linking mayors who have responsibilities for huge numbers of people. It aims to raise consciousness worldwide about the abolition of nuclear weapons primarily and it flowed out of that, the initial nuclear bombing of Hiroshima and Nagasaki. And the aim is to kind of develop closer links between all the different member cities of this, Mayors for Peace. At the moment, there are 6,084 cities in 158 countries, so it's a very substantial organisation. It's registered at the United Nations in special consultative status with the United Nations and currently, Mayors for Peace is committed to the 2020 Vision Campaign which aims to abolish nuclear weapons by 2020. A challenging task given there's only six years to go, but that date marks 75 years after the bombs in Japan and 75 years being the length of time it was thought it would need to pass before anything would grow after the bombs. And the UN Secretary General has been encouraging... And the UN Secretary General has been encouraging this campaign as well. So what it's, what it's trying to do is to work out ways in which cities and states might contribute to the abolition of nuclear weapons. And that's a stalled agenda at the moment. We had Ambassador Kane from the UN visiting us about two months ago, highlighting how stalled it had become. And she said very clearly in her submissions to us that really, it was up to the grassroots and municipalities and others to begin reactivating concern for this, to try and get high levels of political wealth from their nation-states. And this is one of the reasons why this is an important venture. So cities in this movement, there's a conference every two years, I think, which brings together as many mayors as can attend, which, which is having some impact. Because it not only focuses on the question of nuclear, nuclear issues, but is also looking at ways in which cities themselves can contribute to peacefulness at the level of locality through such things as environmental support and protection. And, you know, your courageous move to divest from fossil fuels is a sort of a nice example of what this, what this might mean. It's also looking at removing the root causes of violence with things like hunger and poverty, promoting cities hospitable to refugees and human rights and so forth. So what happens is that cities organize their own activities to reflect the principles of the membership and then report them to the Mayors for Peace Secretariat, and then they're advertised and promoted globally. Currently, there's no cost for membership, but next year, an annual membership fee of 2,000 yen will be charged, which is about $20. So I think Dunedin City Council can probably afford that. So what I wanted to do was to just suggest that, you know, it's important that the council reaffirms its commitment to being a city for peace, a peace city in the Southern Hemisphere, that the current mayor is activated as a, as a mayor for peace, which he's already registered as such. And that we do something that, that would, in a sense, give some positive expression to this. And, and so I've, I've tabled this sort of City for Peace Declaration from Auckland. And not that I want to encourage kind of north-south kind of competition on such things. Well, maybe it's interesting to encourage a little bit of friendly competition on these things. But just to highlight that there are a number of different ways in which the city can play a kind of catalytic role in relation to these things. The Auckland Initiative is promoting peace through education, so making sure that all our schools and halls of residence and universities and so forth have a peaceful disposition. One of the things that some of our students are working on is a kind of a zone of peace for Castle Street. We, it's a kind of, you know, we thought we'd start locally. That's where our center is, is established. There's a kind of focus on how you might build and support peace through families. So where you have abusive families, high levels of domestic violence, you know, what do you need to respond to those? We're, we're in discussion right now about developing a community mediation center. And I think that's already had some conversation with, with officials. And a community problem-solving center, so that people can bring local concerns to that for mediated solutions when and as necessary. It's also focused on supporting and engaging young people so that they become passionate about, you know, the causes of peace and justice. It's focused on building connected and inclusive communities. So how do we make sure that Dunedin's a place which is hospitable to a wide diversity of ethnicities and religious orientations and so forth? How do we make sure that, you know, we're a city that, where human rights and social justice are enshrined, honoring the treaty, respecting the environment, and where we, where we have a kind of interest in linking peace heritage and the arts? And so this City for Peace Declaration is what Auckland decided to do. And it's already beginning to take shape with, in schools and then the development of different kinds of institutions to give support to it. And Len Brown and a number of other Auckland officials have been doing what they can to kind of actively promote it. So I'm basically saying, here to gratulate whoever it was early on to join Mayors for Peace. And I'm making a push that we start thinking quite explicitly about, you know, Dunedin as a city for peace in the Southern Hemisphere and take advantage of the fact that we're the only center in any New Zealand university that's dedicated to the exploration of the origins of violence at all levels and to figuring out ways in which we can respond positively, creatively, and non-violently to those problems.
Thank you, Kevin. Questions, Counselors? Counselor Vargas.
The City for Peace Declaration seems to be almost an opposite of a declaration of war. And it's got a lot of very high-minded principles in there. When you talk about human rights and social justice, there's quite a bit of talk about disarmament, abolition of nuclear weapons, conventional kinds of war. There doesn't seem to me to be much recognition of some of the new weapons that are being employed by countries. And I'm talking about the financial war, that countries are now able to wage on each other with currency manipulation and the threat of dumping bonds on the open market, as for instance, the US did to the Brits over the Suez, nationalization issue. And also wondering whether a, a real peace declaration these days needs to recognize new weapons like financial war and attacks on freedom of information, because that is also a very significant threat to human rights and social justice. Is there any intention to move forward and make people aware of these new weapons that countries are now employing to basically wage war against each other?
Yes, I mean, I think this is one of the biggest challenges facing us in this field, and especially if you're in the arms control and disarmament field, and that is just keeping up with the pace of modern technology. To some extent, you know, the abolition of nuclear weapons looks like yesterday's problems in the face of drones and, and, and all of this kind of, you know, remote, remote weapons of war which are being developed. So this, it's not meant to be exclusive. You know, it will keep pace with these different technologies as they develop. And insofar as they represent kind of grave challenges to old principles about fighting war and so forth, you know, I think they will be analyzed and opposed. You know, the use of unmanned vehicles, for example, drones at a distance, is, you know, is a kind of, is a big challenge, especially when it comes to targeted assassination of political opponents. This is raising all sorts of interesting and challenging questions around extrajudicial execution.
So just, just to, to cap, there's no plan to include in this economic war or information war?
Well, that would be up to you. I'm simply proposing that as a, as a way of giving some concrete expression to the membership of Mayors for Peace and Dunedin as a city for peace, that we could, we could develop something similar to this. I'm not suggesting that this should be the, be the, you know, word-for-word document. I mean, we could create something here that would make sense for Dunedin and would represent a wide variety of interests, including the interests that you raise around financial warfare and all the other ways, and cyber warfare and all the other ways in which people do harm to each other.
Counselor Hawkins.
Thank you, Worship. And thank you, Professor, for speaking to us. Given the discussion we'll have later on this afternoon around the city's arts and culture strategy and its potential development, I wondered if you could expand briefly on a comment you made towards the end about the role you see art playing in the peace movement locally and nationally?
Well, that's, I, I, when I was at the University of Queensland, we had a whole program on peace through music, art, and poetry and so forth. And one of the, one of the important and often untapped resources that every, every city has and every country has is its artists, who kind of, you know, if, if they're not speaking truth and if they're not speaking truth to power and not being authentic to their art. And, and so harnessing visual artists, actors and dramatists and musicians and others, you know, around understanding conflict and violence and, and its alternatives is a kind of a critical part of our aesthetic consciousness. So I'm very much in favor of harnessing, you know, creative activities of artists and others in, in the course of peace.
Other questions? Kevin, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks.
That, Counselors, is the sum total of the public forum. So I propose that quarter two, we begin the council meeting.
I'll do it.
It says on here, one team. I'm lively informed that I'm unable to start any of them till two o'clock. So it should be two o'clock.
Just before we do, Mr. Chairman, do we need to refer this to one of the committees for consideration?
I'm happy to do that.
I'm happy to move that it be referred to the Community and Environment Committee for, for discussion.
Okay. Is there a second, second to Counselor Hawkins? Any discussion on that? Now that the Deputy Chair of that committee has come back into the room to inherit the mantle of responsibility on this, we will have vote on it. This will be referred to Community and Environment. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, Karen? Okay. Two o'clock, Counselors.